Call order, the planning commission meeting for Thursday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harlecker, please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I'm here.
Commissioner Smolke.
Here.
And Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here.
All right, first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Smokey.
Casey.
Casey, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's been adopted. Our next order of business is approval of our minutes of our December seventeenth meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Smokey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The minutes are approved. First order of new business this evening is planning case twenty one dash two. Conditional use permit for auto repair business at three zero five zero Coon Rapids Boulevard. Fridley Auto Repair, Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Um, the applicant's proposing to occupy about forty two hundred square feet of a building at thirty fifty Coon Rapids Boulevard. Pull it up here. Come on, there we go. Um, this is the site here. Um, if you recall, last month, uh, the commission approved a fitness center for this portion of the site here. Uh, Coon Rapids Boulevard and one hundred and eleventh. Um, the area the applicant is, uh, proposing to occupy for the auto repair business is highlighted here in green. Um, there are other tenants in the front at this point, I believe, uh, an archery business and, uh, a small rod and reel manufacturing facility. But they'll be, uh, auto repair will be occupied in this area here. Um, at this time, uh, the applicant is a sole mechanic and there are four lifts in the building. There is sufficient parking provided to meet, uh, the parking needs. They've got three spaces out front for customers. And then parking in back and a fenced in area for the vehicles that are being worked on. Customers will come in there, do the paperwork, drop the cars off. The cars will be driven around to the gate on this side and parked in back. The applicant does have a verbal agreement with the property owner here because the gate to access that is here. Staff is recommending that a, a condition be added. Uh, should the, uh, planning commission approve this application? That the, um, applicant get, uh, an access agreement in writing, uh, between the two parties. Um, this is, uh, the area of the building from the inside that they'll be occupying. The office space will be up front here, and this is the garage door to get into the, uh, shop area. Um, code requires four spaces plus two per stall, um, with the four lifts, uh, twelve parking spaces are required. Staff compared it with the, um, conditional use permit standards found in section eleven dash three oh four point three. And, um, finds that they are, uh, consistent with those standards. And staff is recommending the planning commission approve the conditional use permit. With the following conditions. Barbed wire on top of the privacy fence and chain link fence. On the west side of the site be removed, compliance with title eleven. Three striped parking spaces, uh, be provided at the shop entrance on the east side of the building. And a fourth condition, uh, regarding, uh, access agreement with the, uh, adjacent property owner, uh, a formal access agreement be, uh, provided. Um, with that, uh, staff is here to answer questions and the applicant is also, uh, with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Mr. Casey.
So, Mr. Harlecker, I drove back behind that property today through that access fence. You know, with that he, he would have the agreement with the other property owner. And there's just one is, am I correct? There's just one garage door access? But that leads into the building and then there, in there, there are four lifts. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, and so he can have more than one lift in, in use at any time, but there's just the one access door?
Correct.
Okay, I kept looking for more, but they're, they're aren't there, so that was my question. Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Beasley is with us also. If you have any questions of, uh, of the applicant of him.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Mary Smolke.
Uh, Commissioner Smolke, go ahead.
Hi, so, uh, Scott, one other question. So could you just clarify for me again, one more thing? So, um, I think you mentioned that the requirement is twelve parking spaces. But did I hear you say that there are only three parking spaces in the front? Or is there, with the additional parking in the back? Is that where they're meeting the twelve parking spaces?
Um, that's correct, Commissioner Smolke. They have got three spaces in front for the clients, customers. And then spacing back to store the cars that are being worked on.
And so that will meet the twelve parking space requirement?
Correct.
Thank you.
And any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
This is Chair Commissioner Geiser.
Commissioner Geisler.
Scott, uh, just a question here has, so we did some adjustments last month with the south, uh, south portion of this building. Now, we're in the middle portion. Um, I drove around this building again today too. Uh, and I'm just wondering, have we done in a holistic, a parking assessment around this property? Uh, considering that the other two tenants that are there as well as, um, some of the open leasing space that's also posted there? Or i- is there enough parking space on this land to keep, to, to, for that building to be fully occupied?
Um, we have not done a, a, a parking analysis of the, of the site. Um, it depends on what uses go in. As these use goes in, um, we'll assess if there's parking for it. At some point, um, parking may become tight and they might have to, uh, do some sort of, uh, shared parking agreement between the tenants.
So as, as far as the city's concerned, each one of these tenants has dedicated parking spaces, um, on this piece of land?
Well, we don't, uh, Commissioner Geiser, we don't look at it as dedicated spaces where there's not really signage that goes up. I'm saying you can only park here if you're visiting, uh, the archery, uh, business. They really can park, you know, anywhere on the site similar to a shopping center.
Correct, but it, but as far as when it comes to allotting parking spaces for this entire structure which shares thirty fifty as an address. They all, the, there has to be, the, it all has to tick and tie out for total parking spaces. So the twenty on the south end, the twelve here, plus whatever, uh, the archery store, plus whatever the custom reel, plus whatever else is there? All has to, there has to be that many spaces available on this lot. Is that correct?
That's what we would look at is, as, as new businesses come in, um, we'd look at the, the parking requirement. That's kind of a, it's, it's not infrequent that that situation comes up, especially with older, um, shopping centers. Where there's, uh, the, the uses change when the shopping centers were, you know, initially developed, there was, uh, sufficient parking for what went in there at that time. Um, but parking needs change as, uh, different tenants come in. Sometimes they don't need, uh, any specific zoning per, you know, any zoning approvals if it's a permanent use and they're just going in and occupying new tenant space. So it's, it's an issue that, uh, uh, comes up from time to time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harlecker, it's Kathy Casey. Just one question. Um, so you're saying there is some vacant space in that, that address in that building? So other businesses could come there?
Yes.
And that's when the parking would have to be addressed? If, if need be?
If need be, yes, as the new tenants come in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Commissioner Sarah.
Commissioner Heikala.
You're on mute, Don.
Good morning, Mr. Heikala.
Okay, does there have to be an agreement then between the five or six tenants that are in there right now? It's, if sometime, uh, all of a sudden, the archery shop does not have space for his clients to park? So is there some agreement, a multiple agreement between all of them?
Um, Commissioner Heikala. Typically with a, a building on one lot, since all the tenants are in one lot, um, it's, um, there might be something that the owner of the building has between the, uh, different owners, you get so many spaces. It's not something that the city typically gets involved in. That happens more often when you've got, uh, a shopping center situation, um, where you've got uh, buildings on different lots, but they're in access drives. Uh, that's the more conventional type of parking and access, um, easement situation.
I have seen businesses in town where it will say parking for Harry's Barber Shop only. So that's not necessary at this point, right?
At, at this point, no, and that's really something that's, um, set up between the, um, uh, property owner and the tenants to control parking on site like that, to that extent.
Okay.
Any other questions? And is the petitioner have anything they would like to add at this time?
Um, I do have a signed, signed copy for the access uh, in the gated area from, uh, Park City.
All right. And as far as the other conditions such as removing the barbed wire? That's more of a, that's more of a landlord issue, isn't it, Mr. Harlecker?
Pardon?
The removal of the barbed wire on the top of the fence, that's more of a landlord issue?
Well, that's a similar condition that we did with the, uh, uh, when the fitness center come in. I think, Michael, didn't you say that the barbed wire has already been removed?
Yes. Yes, it has.
If it's already been moved, do we really need to have it as a condition of this request then?
That's up to the commission besides. We just found out about that an hour ago.
Mr. Chairman. It's, it's Kathy Casey again. Um.
Mr. Casey.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Harlecker, I drove around that property today, you know, on the south and west side. It looked to me like there was barbed wire there. On the.
That's, I, I think, uh, the applicant is talking about the area that he's leasing. Um, the storage area, the, around that area has been removed.
Oh, in just, in that area, I, I understand, but the.
Uh, fitness center approval.
Correct, that's where I was seeing the barbed wire. All right, thank you.
All right, at this time, uh, we do need to conduct a public hearing. So at this time, I will open a public hearing on planning case twenty one dash two. A conditional use permit for an auto repair business at three zero five zero Coon Rapids Boulevard. Fridley Auto Repair. Anyone wish to speak at this public hearing?
Chair Schwartz.
Go ahead.
This is Assistant City Attorney Blair Bochacconi. We have one attendee, that person has not raised their hand or indicated they wanted to speak.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And quest, question I have for the petitioner at this time. How many employees will there be?
But it's currently me and my wife.
All right. And you both would be coming in one vehicle rather than separate vehicles or?
Correct. All the same vehicle.
So that we don't get an over, overuse of the allowed parking spaces is, was my concern.
Yeah, no, we ride together.
All right. And do you have any plans for adding additional employees in the near future?
Oh, I, I would love to, yes.
All right, Commission, uh, thoughts?
Chair Schwartz.
Go ahead, Don.
I'm just still wondering a little bit, uh, uh, condition number three, where it says three striped parking spaces be provided near the shop entrance. Now, those don't need to be specified for this, uh, auto repair business?
Uh, the, they, yeah, the landlord in lease, uh, has it written up that the three spots out in front are designated for my customer parking.
Okay, does that add any more, require any more discussion?
You, okay, your landlord is, uh, saying that, is he gonna, between you and him, are you gonna sign it that way then, or?
Well, I can if, if need be.
I, I'm just afraid that, uh, if it's supposed to be just your parking that people either for the archery center or for, uh, the fitness center, for example, much less any of the other possible people that may come into the building later would tend to use those parking stalls.
Okay, yeah, I can sign it, but definitely.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smolke.
So, uh, actually, Scott, a question back to Scott again, I, I guess, because I know that we had a great deal of discussion or some discussion, uh, along these lines, uh, last month as well with the previous, um, requests that we had. Um, that, you know, we talked about the parking, we talked about the barbed wire. Some of the things which were really out of the control of the, um, of the petitioner. Um, but, you know, we were trying to make it conditional onto their request, right? And I'm just, again, questioning, and it, what makes me think about it is, um, Commissioner Geisler's question about the parking assessment. I mean, have we really evaluated this property? It was just one business previously. And so have we really evaluated this process to, um, you know, to allow for multiple businesses to now come in? I hate to keep putting the petitioners through, you know, this line of questioning, especially on things that may be out of their control. So can you maybe help elaborate on that? Is there something we should be in, we should be doing or should have done prior to even entertaining some of these requests?
Um, Commissioner Smolke, um, with, with conditional use permits, um, they aren't really assigned to the applicant. The conditional use permits go with the property. Um, so actually the, the property owner, as well as the applicant is getting the benefit of the conditional use permit. Uh, you could be argued that even the, um, the property owner gets more out of this because if, uh, the applicant decides to move, he's still got that conditional use permit there for somebody else to move into that space.
Yeah, agreed, but we don't have the property owner at these meetings. So again, the conditions that are, are being asked as part of the, um, proposals are, you know, I don't, I, I'm not sure that the petitioner can actually speak to, can they? I mean, are we asking them to agree to things that they have control?
Oh, the, the petitioners do get public hearing notices. They signed off on the application, so they know that is being processed, so they're aware, um, this isn't, you know, the, the application isn't being done behind their backs, if that's what you're, um.
No, no, I just, I, I was more concerned about asking, you know, again, adding these conditions to the proposal, if there are things that are outside their control and how do we know that the property owner is in agreement to this? So, so that's primarily it. And if we, if we did any sort of evaluation, when we learned that this property was basically going to be broken up into multiple businesses, um, to whether or not that, that it can accommodate that. Uh, so we don't have to put each petitioner, it's, I mean, we've spent a bit of time, we're focused on so much on the parking, on the parking this time. Um, and again, the next applicant that comes in, they're, you know, we're gonna ask the same questions, right? And so I just wondered if there's something we should be doing proactively with this property owner um, to, to, um, have it ready for new, new requests that come in.
I mean, Commissioner Smolke, that's certainly something that, um, we could contact the property owner and, uh, have some discussions with him regarding his
Future.
future plans and how, how best to, um, accommodate the parking needs, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Geisler.
Yeah, I, I would like to, uh, kind of dovetail off of Commissioner Smolke's conversation there. I mean, there's, there's twenty seven to thirty stalls, depending on your interpretation of the existing striping for the remainder of this building, um, to be shared across everything. And when I took my little tour around today, there was three open at six o'clock. Um, not counting the south end of the building, which is basically still closed. Um, so what, what my main concerns are i- with this is, you know, as we start eating up these parking spaces and we, we've asked for seven at the last one, we're asking for three new ones to be put in here now. Um, there just isn't a lot of tar left to put more parking on, and I don't want to get us in a position where we are conditionally using our way out of, they can't rent out some tenant space because there just isn't enough parking anymore. Um, especially since this is, uh, really kind of a, uh, a very differently shaped and structured lot with parking around in very different ways. You know, we don't have a big classical block of parking like, uh, a strip mall wood or a shopping center where it's, you know, very clearly, here's a big block and everybody just walks where they gotta go. Um, there's kind of some directional parking here too. Um, you know, the other part that I have, the other question that I have here, um, was, was this an auto repair? Or, uh, when it was the Power Sports Center, was this under some sort of vehicle maintenance previously?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure on the history of how it was used when it was the Power Sports Center. Or any, any agreements that were in place back then.
When it came to the environmental assessment for this, um, you know, obviously auto repair has its own challenges as far as, you know, gas, oil, other fluids, um, that can be leaking out of there. And I guess I have a little bit of concerns of the share, you know, what's being done industrially right next to a fitness center and a recreational center, um, when usually a lot of these auto centers are kind of more separate from the others. Um, and so I'm just wondering what the city would, city assessed on that as far as the adjacent usage? And as far as ventilation and other aspects went in the environmental review?
Yeah, the, the environmental view as far as ventilation, um, um, separate oil and, and, uh, separation. That's done through the building permit process. When they get the building permit, um, they have to get permits for, um, to separate the, the fluids, um, inside the building before it goes out, as well as provided, uh, ventilation that, uh, meets, uh, city and state codes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else with, uh, any thoughts or comments? Or are we ready for a motion of some sort?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smolke.
Just gonna throw the question out before we would make any additional approvals for this property. Do you think that it would be wise for us to, um, hear from the, uh, the property owner in terms of his future plans? So we can, we can, it would help us to, I guess, be better prepared as these requests are coming through? So that we know that they're the right mix, that they're conducive to the property? I think the questions about the, the environmental questions are, um, are really good. And it's like, I'm, I was just thinking about if I was in the fitness center and there's fumes, um, from the auto. Is that going to be something that will be challenging for those tenants then? So, you know, between those two tenants, and then when you start adding in the crunched parking spaces, that again, just gonna compound things? Are we setting up the tenants who are looking to us for some, some help here? You know, are we setting them up for, um, problems that they may not be aware of, that we're not fully aware of? Should we be doing a property assessment? Of some kind?
Mary, you're saying for any future ones, not?
I'm, and I'm even, I'm including this one. I am including this one. I mean, I know that it's like we're looking for a decision, but potentially, um, you know, I can, we can confer with um, our assistant attorney, but it's, if we can maybe postpone it. But I just wonder if we, we need to know what the plans are for this property before we make any decisions. So we know there's adequate property space, so we know that there is not any conflict between the, the types of businesses going into this property that is conducive, that, you know, can support it, it, you know, things like that, the, the parking spaces. Do we need to do a, a more broader assessment before we approve things?
Chair Schwartz.
Go ahead, sure.
So we comply with the sixty day rule unless the applicant agrees to an extension in writing. We notify the applicant of an extension in writing. Uh, we need to get this done before the next meeting, so we would have to extend the sixty day rule.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Ron Bradley.
Oh, Commissioner Bradley.
A question for Blair, uh, the attorney. Uh, isn't the environmental and, uh, some of the other concerns that are being raised here? I think it was said, uh, by Mr. Harlecker that they were a part of the building inspection process and they're not really part of the conditional use permit process?
Well, the, the commission's free to consider that's usage sort of thing here, but yes, Commissioner Bradley, you're correct that, um, the permitting process requires compliance with all state and federal codes. So that the concerns about, um, air handling and disposition of waste, that will be addressed through the permitting process.
Thank you.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Yes, I have a question for, uh, uh, Mr. Harlecker. Uh, Mr. Harlecker, does the applicant and the business meet all the conditional uses or categories business? Does it meet the requirements for the application? Are they allowed to set up business in this, in the Port Campus, um, Square, uh, district?
Yes, auto repair businesses, Miss, uh, Commissioner Knoblock, are a conditional use in, uh, Port Campus Square.
Okay, I understand that this area is, um, in and out of development and it looks like an area that, uh, as things start to pick up in the uh, as things start to pick up in the economy, that it might be an area for development. But, uh, with, without saying that, I, I think the applicant is, is worthy, meets the requirements, and I think we should vote to approve it. That's all.
I, I agree with Ray. Um, I will say that. As far as approaching the landlord, the property owner, um, I guess that would, I, that I would leave that to Mr. Harlecker. With, you know, with our request, maybe that this be looked at in advance a little bit, but I see no reason to stop the process tonight. I think we need to give Mr. Beeson an answer.
Good question for the, uh, petitioner. Uh, are you going to be having any storage of flammable fluids, uh, gasoline oils, things of that nature?
Used, used oils until they're, they're picked up and my hazardous waste disposal licensing should take care of that.
And how often is that, uh, picked up?
Well, when it's, it, it really, it depends on how quickly it fills up. Um, but, uh, I, it was almost a year before I had it completely full. At the last shop I was in.
And Mr. Harlecker, if, if we, uh, approve the conditional use permit and then during, during the, uh, permitting with, with the city, it's found that environmentally it doesn't, it doesn't work. Uh, what happens to the conditional use permit then at that point?
Well, at some point, um, if the, uh, commissioner, if the commission has, uh, approved the, uh, conditional use permit, um, you'd go back through, uh, the process, the revocation process, formal revocation process if issues came up.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
Once again, uh, I'll ask about the signage. Is there any issue or any compliance, things that need to be addressed regarding signage for this business?
Um, Commissioner Heikle, signage would have to, they'd have to submit signed permits, whatever signs, um, they decided to put up, whether it's on the building or on the, uh, freestanding ground signs out front, um, they'd have to submit, uh, signed permit like, like any other business would.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone willing to, uh, try a motion?
I will try a motion, Mr. Chair, Kathy Casey.
Mr. Casey.
Um, Chair, in planning case twenty-one dash two, I move that we approved, approve the proposed conditional use permit with the following conditions. Number one, the barbed wire on top of the privacy fence and chain link fence on the west side of the site be removed. Number two, compliance with Title eleven of the city code. Number three, three-stripe park, parking spaces be provided near the shop entrance on the east side of the building. And I understand. Number four, possibly, I believe it's already done, but that the, um, petitioner have, um, access onto his property with the permission, a written permission of the next door business. I guess, yeah, four of them is what I understood I needed to do.
The access agreements with the adjacent property owner.
Correct.
All right. And is there?
Okay.
Who, who, the second was?
Hi, Mr. Heikle.
Heikle, Commissioner Heikle, thank you. All right, we have a motion by Casey, second by Heikle, any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, one, one last comment here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Uh, Scott, as far as, um, access goes to this site for emergency services, this is about as far as tucked away as it can get for access for the fire department. Um, especially with that privacy chain link fence, that gate is frequently closed. Um, is that part of the permitting review process as well?
Um, it has not formally gone to the, um, uh, fire department for review. Um, they can get around, uh, the sides of the building, both the north, south and, and east sides. Typically, they don't have problems if they need to get through, uh, uh, a gate, um, they're usually able to get through them.
Yeah.
If needed.
Okay, that, cause that, uh, that east ax or the west axis there is, that drive aisle is barely large enough for a regular car. Can't imagine they can get there, so, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Nablock.
Yeah, I think last month or with the last applicant, I think part of the condition, if, if it was not, was the south end, that that entire fence and gate is, I believe it's supposed to be, uh, part of the applicant, the application to have it removed. So I think that would take care of the issue of access that Commissioner Geisler mentioned.
If, if I may make the correction, I'm actually speaking of the privacy fence on, on the, on the west side of the property that will be maintained. Um, between property thirty-fifty and thirty-sixty there where the shared access is, that, that gate is there and closed often.
Never locked though.
Never locked, okay.
Oh, it's not locked.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So even overnight till while you've got vehicles stored in there, you wouldn't be locking that gate?
No.
Okay. All right, we have the motion and second, is there any further discussion? You're in, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and this is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within ten days if someone wishes to do so. Otherwise, good luck, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our next case is planning case twenty-one dash one. A site plan to repurpose the J.C. Penney Building in Riverdale Village at one-two-seven-nine-two Riverdale Boulevard, Westwood Professional Services. Mr. Harlecker.
Um, yes, uh, It's application here, that's, uh, it's the J.C. Penney Building on the corner of Main Street and Riverdale Boulevard. Um, the applicant is proposing to, uh, repurpose that building um, and change the, uh, interior of it to accommodate, uh, five tenant spaces. Uh, they're demolishing about twenty thousand square feet in this area here to, uh, accommodate, um, two new loading bays. And they'll also be updating the exterior of the building. Building was originally constructed, uh, back in two thousand and two as part of the, uh, original Riverdale Village development. The owners are proposing to create five new tenant spaces. A forty-four thousand square foot space. Uh, it's about a nineteen thousand square foot space here. Uh, twenty-eight hundred and two, twenty-six hundred square foot smaller spaces here. This is the area that was, uh, is proposing to be demolished to accommodate the two new loading bays that will service, uh, the larger tenant here. A loading area that'll uh, service the nineteen thousand square foot space here. And a maneuvering area for trucks to, uh, pull in and then back into the, the loading bays, uh, there. As a part of the application or the reconfiguration of the building, um, they aren't, uh, modifying any of the existing, uh, parking areas here, those all stay the same. Um, it's just really the facade of the building. And, uh, this area in here, uh, that's, uh, will be worked on. Um, so the, the parking, uh, where the building will not be, uh, affected at all. It'll stay as is. I stated trucks will drive down through here behind the building, uh, turn around, pull in here and then back into the loading bays and then exit, um, out, uh, on the Main Street, Riverdale Drive. Um, this is the landscape plan. Um, this is a revised plan, uh, staff received it after the packets went out. And, uh, it goes a long ways toward addressing, uh, staff's, uh, landscaping concerns that were, uh, brought up in the staff report. Um, they are doing on this, uh, island here, they're doing, uh, perennials and, uh, tall prairie grasses. Uh, one of staff's concerns was this, uh, uh, screening wall here. There's a ten-foot screen wall to screen this loading area here as well as the one, uh, back farther away here. Uh, they are providing some vertical arbor vayday along here to, to break up the screen wall as well as some ornamental grasses. Uh, they're also adding, uh, evergreens on this corner here. And then they've got existing, uh, shrubs, I'm sure mature shrubs here, here and along here, as well as uh, the dots are, uh, existing, uh, overstory trees. Uh, this area here, uh, they're proposing to include as a, uh, recycling area. They'll have two, uh, recycling enclosures here. And this area here is a concrete pad. Uh, that'll be there in case they need to move in a generator for, uh, emergency electricity. Um, staff is concerned about the, uh, location of the, uh, enclosures at such a prominent location. And, uh, one of staff's, uh, recommendations, should the, uh, planning commission approve the, uh, site plan, is to find a, uh, a site better suited for, uh, the enclosure, something more interior to the site and in a less, uh, visible location. Um, these are the building elevations, um, this is the north side. This is the entrance to the, uh, larger retail space, the forty-four thousand square foot, uh, area. You can see they've got a mix of materials, uh, this is a, uh, kind of a gray architectural panels. Um, and they've got the original brick, um, they've added a lot more windows along this site here. Um, doors here and new canopies. And this is the, uh, smaller, uh, of the, the two major tenant retail spaces. Again, they're putting new parapets, additional windows and a, uh, awning over the entrance. And then at this location here, this is the entrance for the, uh, corner space. And again, it's got, uh, uh, the, the canopy over the top. This here is the south elevation. This is the, uh, screening wall for the single loading area. Uh, this area here is the screening wall for the, uh, two loading bays. And then they've got a, uh, tower here, parapet here to help break up that, uh, south elevation. And again, there's, uh, there's quite a bit of, uh, changes in here. This is one of staff's, uh, concerns with the original plan was, was breaking up the, uh, south and east elevation. And this is done by adding this here with a glass. And again, these are stepped back, um, you've got the, the screen wall here, the loading bay and then the wall, and you've got another screening wall, the loading bay, and it backs off another wall. Uh, those bricks are visible here on the site plan. So you got the screen wall, then the wall of the building, and then it juts back and you got another screen wall there and another, uh, wall to the building. So this south wall is, uh, broken up with both the wall and the mixing materials. Uh, there is a, a wall here that, uh, will match the, uh, existing brick to, uh, screen, uh, the dumpster enclosures, um, that would be right here. And then on the east elevation facing Riverdale Boulevard, uh, this is the, uh, recycling area. And they upgraded the corner here with a change in materials and colors. Um, you got the, here that's got a change in materials. And then the existing, uh, building. Uh, staff feels that the changes that they made here to the original plans, um, are sufficient to break up that east, uh, elevation. And on the west side, um, we've got the, the smaller tenant spaces. The three of them here, this is the main entrance there, they've got it, uh, with the parapet. Um, the awnings, uh, the increased grass, glass. And this is a single loading bay. And these two over here are the, uh, two loading bays, and there's also a, uh, trash compactor over there. With that, um, staff is recommending, uh, approval of the, uh, site plan uh, with the conditions in the staff report. Uh, staff is recommending that the, um, condition number one, uh, be eliminated. Um, condition number three be eliminated, um, those were addressed with the revision to the facades. Um, uh, question, uh, condition number four will remain, engineering comments be addressed. Uh, number five, uh, was the applicant enter into a site security agreement with the city. And then a new one, number six, um, all the, uh, these are, uh, possible locations for tenants, signage, um, but all signage, uh, will require, uh, separate sign permits, that's typical of all, uh, site plans. And, uh, the other condition is that the proposed recycling area must be moved to a less conspicuous location. Uh, the proposed location is inconsistent with the image of city desires at the main entrance to the shopping center. With that, I'll ask, is there any questions? And, uh, applicants' representatives are also, uh, with us this evening.
Give Mr. Harlecker, commission, any questions for the, for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
When do the, uh, engineering, uh, reports, are they available?
Um, they're working on revisions, they're working with the engineering department on there, they're, they're the typical engineering comments regarding uh, stormwater management. Um, they are working also with the engineering department on improving traffic access, particularly, uh, traffic into the site, uh, of, um, Riverdale Boulevard. Um, it's been a goal of the city engineering department to work with the, uh, shopping center owners on improving, um, traffic circulation, uh, within the center. And, uh, this would be one case where, um, it will be, uh, in discussions with the city about, uh, improving, uh, traffic access. Let me see if we can, uh, pull it up here. It would be in, in this area here. Um, the trucks would come in, maneuver here and then come in through the sites, that's typically how they go now. Um, so, um, they'll be, uh, in discussions with the engineering department to see if there is a way to, uh, uh, better improve, uh, traffic and truck circulation, uh, in this area.
Mr. Harlecker, the, the pond, is, is that, is the pond there now? Mr. Harlecker, the pond, is, is that, is the pond there now?
Chair Schwartz, yes it is. And on that.
I drove by there today.
Landscape plan is it's got the shrubs here. They're taller, I don't know, some sort of dogwood maybe, but they're large shrubs. And all these, these dots are a mix of overstory trees. And then they're adding three evergreens here to help kind of screen this corner of the building from the intersection.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Geisler, is it?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Harlecker, so the staff is requesting a different space for the recycling area. Have there been any discussions of where staff thinks this should go? Or is the applicant going to be shooting in the dark again here?
At, at this point, no, there's, there might, never looking at an area more internal to the site. Somewhere in here possibly, I know this is a quality here, maintenance area. Maybe somewhere back in here, up against the, the screen wall here maybe. But I'm sure the applicants would like to speak to the commission regarding this.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Schmucke.
Alright, so staying on the recycling units for a second here. So I have two questions. Number one, how are they accessed? So is it something where employees of the building, they walk to that recycling plat and, and drop in the recycling? Or is it something where there's a, is there some sort of a vehicle that they use to, to actually load it? I guess, are these, I don't know, I don't appreciate the size of them or how they're accessed. Can you explain that really quick?
I'll leave that up to the applicants to discuss.
Okay, the other question is similar to Commissioner Geisler's. I just wondered, have we exhausted all options to be able to just screen it? So that, I realized that it's a very visible corner in terms of where it's placed with the, with the traffic that goes by that area. But are we sure that we haven't exhausted all options to properly screen, screen it? So that they don't have to find another location for it?
Commissioner Schmucke, that is an option. Applicant could do maybe put more decorative front on it. Increase the landscaping along there even more. That would be options.
Okay. Yeah, I do want to be careful though too, that it's like we're not, with the additional landscaping that we're not adding so much that it completely blocks, you know, the visibility to the building. I think then tenants lose, like if there are, is signage or whatever that they are able to place that it can become blocked as well. And I just want to make sure that it doesn't, it doesn't hinder that. We don't try to cover it up with something else. So just if it's something structurally that can be, that could screen it, I think that would be great. Much something more that's part of the building as opposed to adding more landscape.
That's something that the applicant can speak to.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair? I'm wondering, there must be a reason why it's down here closest to the largest tenant. Are all of the tenants in the building going to be using this one dumpster or one disposal area? I would imagine that the largest tenant is going to be producing the most waste. And that's why it's over there in that corner.
I, Commissioner Heikel, I think that's, that's accurate again. I'll let the applicant speak to that. In our discussions, my discussions with them. They have operational concerns about moving the dumpster to a different location that they'll speak to later on.
Mr. Chair, it's Kathy Casey. I have a question for Mr. Harlecker. So you, you've referred to these as recycled bins and dumpsters, but they're, they're dumpsters, right? And don't we usually, we usually screen those on other properties or enclose them is what I'm saying. But these would, these would not necessarily, well, we're looking at screening them instead, but they are dumpsters. Is that correct?
That's correct. I would, I classify them the same as dumpsters. But they're, you know, for recycling materials and I believe instead of just typical trash.
Oh, okay, so.
That's where I'm standing anyways.
Where are the? Maybe the petitioner has to ask, answer, but where are the dumpsters then? If these are recycling or they bind?
They'll have to speak to that. They weren't showing on the outside anywhere.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Heikel?
The compactors, I presume take care of all the cardboard, correct? And then the dumpsters take care of the remainder that can't be baled or whatever in the compactor.
Yeah, I'll have to let the applicant speak to how they process the, the waste from the, from the businesses. Typically, yeah, you got the boxes in the compactor, they have a truck back in and take away the cardboard at whenever it's not knowing what the tenant is going into that building. There might be other, I'm sure there are other recyclables that they don't process through the compactor. And that's what these dumpsters are for.
Well, before we keep asking questions that are for the petitioners, why don't we just go ahead and listen to the petitioners? Anything the petitioners would like to add, please give your name and address for the record and let's begin.
Say, Mr. Chair, this is Dan Parks from Westwood. Can you hear me? Am I coming across clear? Alright, very good.
Thank you. The, the team tonight with us is Bill Bowman and Kathy Anderson. Bill Bowman is a developer with North American Development Group. And Kathy Anderson is the architect with Architectural Consortium. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I have some issues on my screen here, so I'm not seeing the picture. The, so I'll let Bill Bowman in a few, in a moment here, talk about the operational aspects of the, the dumpsters or the trash area or the recycle area, more importantly, that we've talked about. And Kathy can talk about the elements of the building. From a civil engineering standpoint, we have actually reduced the hard surface a little bit with this project. And the recycling area at the southeast corner of the site has two facilities that have materials that match the architecture and material types of the building. And then the front includes some doors that Kathy can talk about the materials. One of the issues I do want to bring up since the, the visibility seems to be a real concern is if you were to look at a Google map, and I don't know if Mr. Harlecker has it available. But if you look at a, the map, not a map, but a view of a corner presently, you will find that that corner of the building is really not seeable at all today. And we've already added some additional conifers to that area that, I mean, some deciduous trees to that area to even hide it even more. So if Scott is able to grab that corner from a Google map, that would really be helpful if you could share that.
Yeah, I'm not able to do that.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I don't have the picture handy either. But if you were to look at that from a Google map, you would see that that corner is already relatively opaque. And then what we've done is we've tried to add some additional evergreens in that corner. The trees in this corner, as well as the trees on the south side of the building were all installed about 20 years ago when the project was, was constructed. So they're fairly mature trees, there's already good visibility being reduced at that location. So we, we think the, the visibility is really going to be taken care of with the, the materials that are there. And as Scott said earlier, there are some reasons why we like the recycling area at that location due to operational aspects of the building. I will stop talking. If, if there's some further engineering type or site plan questions going forward, I can address those. But why don't I introduce Bill Bowman, who is the owner's representative? And then he can direct traffic from that point.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually was gonna, Kathy was going to speak on our behalf here with regard to the actual functionality of the site plan and how it was developed. She worked hard to make it, to get it to this, this point. And you know, I, if Kathy could speak to it, it'd be great.
Kathy Anderson, go ahead.
Kathy, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Anderson, president of Architectural Consortium. Very excited to be here on this project, having been the original architect back 20 years ago. As far as the trash issue goes, I think it's very important for this particular user that it's in this location as far as how it's accessed from the, the back of their building. I wouldn't want to see them schlepping trash far away from this particular area. And I think in the future, you'll see depending on who the other tenants are, trash locations suggested that'll work with those particular users and their needs as well. We have been very careful, I don't want to draw attention to the trash areas. I think Dan did a good description of how they're screened landscaping wise. But we are matching and downplaying the exact brick materials. We verified that with the brick reps that that brick is still available. And I think just having it downplayed, not calling attention to it and using the screening, I think just from a functional standpoint for this tenant and the rest of the center, this is a good location.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question? Clarification maybe of Kathy Anderson. This is Commissioner Casey. So those two dumpsters, are they trash or are they recycling? I'm unclear. They're both.
Correct.
And they'll be, they'll be emptied by the same hauler?
Yes.
Okay, there, there's just a need for two of them for the whole, but they service the whole tenant space, right?
Just only that particular tenant. So as we know more, and we're really focusing just on this tenant for this approvals. But as we know who future tenants could be and what their needs are, we'll work with them on what's the best placement for other dumpsters.
Oh, I see, but this tenant requires two.
Correct.
Two dumpsters. Alright, well, that, that clarifies some, I can see why they'd want it near them. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is it fair to ascertain that one of the dumpsters is for trash and one is for recycling materials?
Be a good guess, I don't have that level of detail, but it's a good guess. Also, someone had brought up, if you look at the site plan in the loading dock area, there is a large compactor. And that's how the cardboard will, will be handled.
Compactor is just for cardboard?
Most likely.
Alright.
Mr. Chair? So we are, we're going to be dealing with this, what, one, two, three, four more times? With the garbage issue? Or the other four tenants?
It could be another one tenant, it could be three tenants too. We're focusing just on this particular tenant that we know and they're out actively marketing and chasing down future tenants.
We wouldn't necessarily, this is Kathy Casey again. Mr. Chair or your Scott, we wouldn't necessarily be reviewing anything for the other four tenants, correct? Where we're looking at this whole space and we don't normally address what goes in these spaces when the developer or do we? What am I thinking? That we'd have to address the trash issue four more times or some such number?
No, Commissioner Casey, typically we do not. If they do require some sort of outdoor container, they'd have to submit a building permit for construction of the enclosure. And staff would look at it at that time. That doesn't happen very often.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Grayson?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess to, to maybe clarify that, so as far as this site plan is concerned, this site plan is really only complete for retail A's garbage management and recycling management. There is not anything contemplated here to deal with the other four tenant spaces trash handling needs, is that correct?
Correct.
So holistically, when we do site plans, have we ever done a full site plan that we know isn't complete?
Well, well, with the site plan as is being proposed and what the commission is looking tonight, there is no outdoor containers allowed other than what's shown on the plan.
So if we were to process this site plan as is, the assumption, if we approve this, is that all five retail spaces will be used, will be using the trash enclosures that are listed on this site plan, is that correct?
We won't, the city won't regulate who uses that specific container. That would be up to the building owner. The other tenants, they may not generate as much trash, so they're able to keep it inside and take it out when the, on pickup day. But with the site plan that is being considered tonight, this is the only spot where outdoor trash recycling containers are allowed.
I would add that we are committed to any future trash enclosures at locations again, would have the matching materials that match the look of these and to match the building and do our best for the landscape screening as well. But again, we don't know the number and uses for the future.
Where the problem comes in however, is after tonight, we don't have control over where they're placed. And then that, that's one of the issues that is normally handled by this commission is where the trash enclosures are. So if you're going to add additional trash enclosures into the future, we have no control over that.
So my best guess would be where someone had indicated back by that maintenance room is the likely spot? Would definitely be at the rear of the building.
Yeah, I guess if I can round out my comment there, you know, this, this building is a roughly, you know, 250 feet on a side, so 200 to 250 feet or so. The, we're looking, it's a, it's a 600-foot walk from retail seat to that back corner. So even if it was closer, it's still a pretty long hike if we're using shared trash enclosures and where that's at. Even if it is moved towards the more central space, we're still a couple hundred foot walk across public space to get to that because there's no backdoor access to it. So I, I, I do, I do have questions about, you know, if we're doing a site plan, planning for the site a, a, as a commission, I, I, I think we need to have more discussion there. I'm glad we have contemplated use for the largest portion of this parcel, but I don't think we, we want to forget about the other half of it while we're working on this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yes, so just a really quick question then. In the event that the, that the proposed trash bins are, do become shared by the other tenants, is there a sidewalk? What is kind of the access to that area for those properties if they were to need to access it? I guess if we at least knew that, you know, and if it can support the other, the other businesses, is that even an option at this point? Is, would that be considered? Or it cannot support the other tenants and it's solely for this business? And then I guess my original question from the beginning around, how do they access it? I wanted to understand what, is there a sidewalk, is there, you know, is it, how is it paved, et cetera, to, for them to access it?
Would only be used for this, that particular tenant. Future trash enclosures as we get new tenants.
Okay. And, and is it accessed externally? Like, do they have to walk to it? It's not, it's not accessed from, from their site? Where's the door, what, what door do they come out to then get to the trash bins? How far do they go?
There'd be a rear door from that loading dock area near the
Okay.
And that's why, again, I think it stops from trash being rolled across the site, you know, the closer it is, the more it's gonna be contained.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And we have any other comments from any of the other petitioners that are present?
That area, excuse me, Mr. Chair, the area that, where the double doors are for the trucks back in to unload right across from the dumpsters, is there a cover over that, or is that a wide open space?
That is a wide open space. But screened from, with a screen wall.
Then you have parking spaces along Main Street there. Where do those, the people that park there, where do they enter into the building?
Those are probably employee parking stalls and they'd have access to that rear door.
It kind of looks like all of the parking along Main Street and then over to the other side, which would be closer to the vitamin shop, that would all be employees, I would guess, right?
Employees and there may be future developments that could make use of some of those stalls.
Do you, do you know, is there some future development being thought about there?
Not at this point, but again, depending on what type of tenants go into this existing building, where their doors are located.
Is it, is it correct to assume that those parking stalls are currently there now because they were there for JCPenney and they're just left over from the transition? And that you then plan to probably use them for employee parking?
Yeah, typically in a large center like this, you the tenants, you know, make their employees use faraway spots so that all the ones out in front are free for the customers. Pretty typical.
Mr. Chair, though, I think your, your comment was, was well taken, because there was a door on the southern end of the building that was there before, so that would have allowed customer access to the south side of the building. And that's just not needed route right now with the building being more oriented towards the north and to the west, at least the front doors.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from any of the other petitioners that are present? All right, Commissioner, any other questions at this time for the petitioners? Before we open a public hearing?
Mr. Chair. Not really a question, but I'm really happy to see this develop as quickly as it is, because you know, there's several other buildings in that shopping center that have been vacant for a long time. So I realize this is pretty prime right on the Main Street and Chinatown, but it's really nice to see that it gets, you know, that it's getting priority. Getting that filled back in. My comment.
All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing and plan in case twenty-one dash one. The site plan to repurpose the JCPenney Building in Riverdale Village, one two seven nine two, Riverdale Boulevard, Westwood Professional Services. Anyone wish to speak at the public hearing?
Mr. Chair. There's one attendee, that person has not indicated they would like to.
Thank you. Hearing, no one speak up for the public hearing, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Commissioner, your thoughts, concerns, comments?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'll just make a couple of comments also. I, I think this is real creative work, and I think the developers deserve some bonus points for, for this kind of creativity, which is on the horizon, I think, with the future of retail in our cities and our city in particular that we were concerned about, but this seems to be flexible enough, so I, I think it's a good concept. And I will overstate the obvious for this one, because, because we always focus on parking spaces. I don't think they're gonna be, they're gonna be a problem this time, I think we have sufficient parking, so that'll be off the table. So, thank you.
Is there a bike rack there anywhere?
Not yet, unless there's some existing ones, but we can note.
No, it's just, just kind of a running joke. We always have to look for a parking, or bike parking.
Yeah, we alternate between parking spaces and bike racks. That always, we always hit those two high spots.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Quickly add that I I did not realize there was a pond there until I made a, made a journey there this afternoon, because I said to my wife, I've never seen a pond, but I did see this in the intention, where there's a lot of cattails and so forth, so it is there. I've never seen it before.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Guyson.
Thank you, a couple of items that I'd like to discuss. On the south side of the property there, there is a trail access to the sidewalk along, along Main Street there, that leads to the existing existing building entrance on the south side. Obviously, that south side won't exist anymore and would lead straight to the loading bays. I think it, it would probably be prudent to remove that as part of this, just to not have that come off as we're working on the landscape plan along there. Between the revised plans and the new, new plans, I think it's still on there. It just seems, seems like it leads to no, a road to nowhere for pedestrians is never a good idea. So if we could just clean that up in whatever way makes sense. And then as far as, I mean, I know we talked about it, we discussed it from the recycling perspective, I, as far as the location for Retailer A or the, the far east side of the building there, I, I think if we can get some a significant level of decorative screening, but the dumpsters themselves are not directly visible. I, I, I do agree with the petitioner, that is a very screened corner relative to how prominent it is. You pretty much got to get to the top twenty-ish feet, ten feet of the building before it's really visible from most carways. But I do have concerns about the fact that basically refuse handling is not contemplated for the other four retailers here. And requiring them to handle it inside, and especially for Retailer B. If you're big enough to need a recessed loading dock, you probably are big enough to generate trash where you needed a handling space for it. You know, there is the back door there, putting some sort of container or space near, in that loading dock bay area also makes it very easy for haulers to get in and out of there, but then that needs some sort of built-in screening from the city code perspective. I, I do think that getting that into a shared space also makes it a little more comfortable for the other smaller retailers to have to haul their trash down there. But I, I, I hesitate to approve such a great plan for half the site without, with a couple of those things that are missing to make this basically, all right, it's ready to go for the other four retailers, that's, that's one of my main concerns here. Because as we've mentioned, we, we just don't get a chance to look at this and we want to make sure that everybody's happy with how refuse handling will be processed on the site. Other than that, I do concur with the rest of the commission, I'm, I'm really appreciative of the architectural stylings of updating, you know, the building that is relatively a gray block or a tan block into a little more aesthetic pleasures, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to what's happening on this building, so I think there's just some real minor operational things that we can get through here, but that's where I'm, that's where I'm sitting with this. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Have we explored, because I, I totally echo everything everybody's saying, I love the plan, I love that it's being repurposed, split up into multiple businesses, that's exciting as well. And I really want to make this, make this work, and I'm just wondering two things, like, is there a potential that perhaps is there space somewhere like in that corner where that mechanical room is right now? Is there space there without interfering with the, the movement for the semis to maybe put another enclosure there for the other businesses possibly? You know, taking up that corner, I'm just looking at seeing, you know, solid walls there. And so it's a potential for another location, maybe of a smaller scale if that does work, but then, of course, you'd have to make sure that it can be again, screened and enclosed. The other question is, and I, I, as I'm looking around this, I don't see the, an optimal place, but you know, along that west side, if there was anywhere in the parking lot. So perhaps the, the corner where we have, I know, I think it's behind the, the parking spaces that are directly behind the vitamin shop, I think it is, is there area to build a, you know, an enclosed trash area for those other, other locations to move that there, or some other space in a parking lot? I know that the, the section that's probably directly across the street from them, that's definitely not optimal, you want that open for your customers to be able to park there, so I was trying to think more in the location that's, that's around where the activity is going on with larger semis moving in and out, if there was something to do there, so is that something that we can consider and to Commissioner Geisler's point, do we, do we want to get that kind of commitment from the petitioners tonight to, to make sure that, that, that we get something agreed to?
I would like to comment that if, if this is the way that the rest of the box develops, and we don't know that to be, you know, for sure, and who those users would be and their needs. Most likely by that mechanical room would be a trash enclosure that would match the one that's out on the corner. And it would probably be shared by all of those tenants. But that's, you know, it's a guess, but it's a very good guess. And I think we'd prefer to keep it tucked in an area like that rather than freestanding out.
My ideal as well, but just wanted to throw the both ideas out there. Okay.
Mr. Chair. I'm wondering about that area behind the single, where the single truck is there. There's some space right there. If they could have their trash receptacle, at least for Retail B in that area.
I think that's what I was proposing as well, Don, is right there where it says the, it's the mechanical room and the single semi.
Yeah, behind, behind where they back up.
Yeah.
At the last little spot, and that would be out of the way of truck maneuvering and
Yep.
Tucked in and might match the building.
Right.
If I, if I may, the, the JCPenney Building, as it currently stands, has the trash enclosures just north of the dock doors as they exist there. So they're on the west side of the building, north of the dock loading bay, so that's fully enclosed. It's actually pretty well hidden, as it exists right now and even finding it for that retail space. So it, it ironically kind of keeps it in the same spot. But, yeah, it, it, as Commissioner Spolki has said and Commissioner Heiko said, that's exactly where I, I, I think if we can get some level of plan to where that's going to be, so that it's contemplated for the future of this is where it's gonna be, this is how we're gonna service the other retailers, I think that will go a long way to appeasing the comfort for the future of the site beyond the planned tenant.
So would we need to make a additional condition in, Mr. Harlicker?
Yes, you, you could certainly make a condition that the any additional or any new dumpsters slash recycling bins, the enclosures be located in the area between the two loading bays or something along that nature on the west side of the building.
So, so Mr. Chair, Mr. Harlicker, I think, I think number two then needs to be reworded, because it does indicate that the proposed recycling area must be moved to a less conspicuous space, but I think that we've agreed that it's acceptable where it's at. So do we remove number two? So we remove one, two, and three from what I heard from the original comments Mr. Harlicker made. We have four and five that still stand, and then I believe you mentioned a couple others that needed to be added, and I apologize, I don't have those.
Yes, we would eliminate one, two, and three. And number four would become condition number one. Engineering comments be addressed. Number two would be the applicant entered into a site security agreement with the city. And number three, the all signage requires separate permits.
Okay.
Did, did you have an additional one?
If, if I may, I, I, I think, I mean, my conversation would be the removal of the sidewalk on the south side connecting to the Main Street one would be one that I would want to put on here, and I, I guess the, maybe the question we need to discuss a little further regarding former condition two. We've, we've, we've agreed to not move it, but do we agree that whether there needs to be additional screening or modifications to that, or are we okay as an open pad as it stands and going with the foliage screening that's there? I don't know if we've specifically discussed that.
Sports typically with dumpster enclosures, they need to have gates on the front, they just can't be open. So there would need to be, code requires that the dumpster be in include gates on the front of it.
If I'm not mistaken, and Kathy Anderson, maybe you could just speak to it, I thought I heard you say that there is some, there is a plan for some enclosure there beyond the landscaping that was shared with the additional pine trees, et cetera, but isn't there something you said that was matching or would complement the structure already?
If you look closely at the elevations, you'll see the tiny little brick dumpster that matches, barely see it, that's why our intention is to downplay, have it match the building, it would have very durable, you know, Trex-type gates on it that'll blend in and you will not be able to see the dumpsters.
And there will be a gate, though, like in front of it, correct? There will be something to, right, and that's what you're talking about, those materials, got it?
Yep.
Mr. Chair. One, one more question, does that mechanical room service all five buildings or all five segments of that building? Is that a required space?
I don't know that we know that level of detail for the rest of the users, but that's a logical place for it.
But does it service all five? But does it service all five segments? Do you know? It does.
And Commissioner Geisler, in reference to, uh, your comment about removal of the sidewalk, wouldn't we still want some kind of a break in the area there? In case there were pedestrians that were taking the bus or whatever that came up along Main Street to have access into that area?
Mr. Chair, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree that, you know, southerly pedestrian access with this plan is actually fairly poor. Um, there isn't a good spot, uh, to go, but I'm not a huge fan of abandoning pedestrians in a parking lot by a loading dock, um, without proper crosswalking available. And there just isn't a way to get there, um, without maybe we could maybe come to that island that's on the, on the corner there at the edge of the loading dock, then come to the painted space, then come up. Um, uh, there just isn't a good way to get a pedestrian from the south, from that south sidewalk into any of the tenant spaces. Um, you know, maybe for employees, but I, I, I'm loathe to encourage citizens to walk into a parking lot and not have a door to get to that's not 400 feet away.
I think the safest way is to use the trail along the pond, the sidewalk around the pond, and then go to the front of the buildings. Stay out of the truck maneuver areas.
So to that, um, Ms. Anderson, would you be willing to put in a sidewalk and a crosswalk on the, uh, what's that? The northeast corner of the building there to facilitate that travel? Basically, a, a connection from the sidewalk at the roundabout into the northern facing of the building?
I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah, there are some sloping issues there that we have to address as well, but it's not a straight shot.
Yeah. And, and, and I, I mean, we're, we're, we're shooting on that from the head on this one, but I want to make sure that, you know, pedestrians have a reasonable way to do their, and, and can get into these, not only the, the main space there, but also the rest of the retail spaces. It's, it's kind of a bit of a hike regardless of how you walk into this. Retail C is, is pretty far away for a pedestrian to get to.
But it was the case originally as well. Well, no, they did have an entrance, didn't they? Yeah, you're right.
Southerly entrance to that single retailer, which
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that's, and that's why it's there and, and, but I think it's exhausted its purpose with, um, only not, not being there anymore.
And if we moved it to the left, I mean, that doesn't really, that doesn't reduce the, uh, the risk with all the semis moving and so forth. So it's just not a good, really not a good access along that, that sidewalk at all.
Yeah. I, as, as with most parking lots, I mean, if they're not walking down a part on an aisle, um, that's a crossing a sea of concrete is always dangerous. Um, especially if we think about any handicapped or, you know, differently able folks crossing that, that's who would be by, on foot.
Is it really, is it really even beneficial then Commissioner Geisler for, um, to ask them to put in that additional cross? I mean, when you consider that the businesses are all on the opposite side. Right? I mean, is there really any benefit to asking them to put that additional crosswalk in? I don't know that we see a lot of, um, traffic that way to begin with. I think most people are coming in by vehicles.
I, I, I would agree. I think if there was going to be one, it would be on that, that corner, but I, all I really am concerned about is removing the existing one to
I agree. Yeah. I would be, yeah, if I would be fine if, if we just removed that sidewalk, I would be open to that. So do we need, we add that as a condition, correct?
Yeah. And I would, I would see that condition as, uh, the sidewalk on the south side of the property connecting to the main street sidewalk be removed.
I think at this point we have four conditions, right? Am I keeping track?
Uh, correct.
Yep.
Okay.
But then we're talking about a fifth condition for the additional recycling dumpster area by the mechanical room.
Okay.
Were we discussing that as well?
Then we need to make.
Are, have they agreed? Yeah. Have they agreed to that? I think we proposed that. We also proposed though. I mean, if it, if it is conducive to, um, use the parking lot space as well. So I don't think we landed on it had to be in that corner, although um, uh, Kathy Anderson did indicate that that does seem to be a logical place. Um, do we need to be definitive or maybe can we leave it open that it would be that location? Or a, a, a place, um, that we're in agreement to the, like that open parking lot area I was saying in the corner. So I think that would be the, um, south, what is it? The southwest corner?
Yes.
If, if I may, um, without moving, getting us into full motion, the, the idea of, um, uh, condition that would say a secondary trash enclosure be included on the site to facilitate, to, uh, service the other retailer, retailers, uh, B, C, D, and E. And we can then allow them a little bit of freedom to figure out exactly where it can go.
I like that.
But I, I think we all know where that's going to go and where it makes the most sense, but I, I, I don't want to be too prescriptive on the condition of where it will go. Just so long as it's done.
Mr. Chair. One, one more time. I think, uh, judging by this, this building and what you can see the, where the trucks are backing up and the generator pad and so forth. Uh, this may be, I know we're, we don't know and maybe can't even go along this line, but this might be a grocery business. And so, um, maybe getting out of line here too, but like over at, by the cup store in Riverdale and so forth, they have buses that go along the front of the building. And so that, uh, might handle some of the pedestrian traffic. Not, that's way down the road, but it looks to me like this maybe, uh, grocery business out there looking at.
Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, can the applicant enlighten us as to prospective tenants for these spaces?
Uh, if, if, if I may, I, I would like to continue to consider this without knowing who's
Yeah, I would.
To, to maintain a little bit of distance on, on who or what. Um, cause this site should work regardless of who's going into it.
So back to the secondary recycling dumpster area, what kind of warning do we want to put on the condition number five?
Commissioner Geisler had it well said.
I would propose a secondary trash enclosure be added to the site to service retailers B, C, D, and E. And if, I, I guess I would refer to staff, do we need to include that meets, uh, a trash enclosure that meets city code or is it, it kind of implied? Okay. Blair's shaking his head, so I think we're good.
Yeah, any enclosure would have to comply with, uh,
Great.
The standard.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Today.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bradley.
Um, Mr. Harlecker, do you think it should be included that, uh, with staff input or staff approval for the location of the secondary? Pardon?
We, I think.
I, I was also going to recommend that it be, uh, with staff approval as far as the location of where that, uh, secondary location would be.
Yeah, uh, Chair Schwartz, they would have to, um, submit for a building permit. If they were to add a secondary enclosure somewhere and it would get funneled through and be reviewed by, uh, city staff.
Any other conditions that anyone thinks we should need, should add? Or any other concerns? Is there com- com- commissioner that wishes to, uh, bring forth a motion?
Chair, I'll move approval of planning case 21 dash one with the following conditions. Uh, all engineering comments must be addressed. The applicant enter into a site, a security agreement with the city. All signage follow the appropriate sign permit process. The sidewalk on the south side of the property connecting to the main street sidewalk be removed. A secondary trash enclosure be added to the site to service retailers B, C, D, and E, subject to staff approval.
I'll second.
Second was Casey or Geisler?
Smokey.
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 So hard on these Zoom meetings.
It is. All right, we have a, we have a motion by Geisler signed by Smokey. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Uh, Ms. Anderson, now, now that we've dealt with the, uh, the case, you have any information on possible prospective tenants?
I do not.
Paying tenants.
Oh, but it's great. The ownership is a great company and they're really going at it and finding, uh, some great uses that I think will reposition us for the future.
It's a good location.
Yeah, very good. Good use of the existing space.
Mm-hmm.
All the revamping of it. That makes a lot of sense. So thank you.
Do you have, uh, do you work with the company that has anything to do with any of the other buildings? In the shopping center?
Uh, maybe Scott wants to.
Yeah, this, this is Scott Goldsmith with, uh, North American Development Group. How's everybody doing tonight? Thank you very much. Uh, I'm the VP of leasing for the company. Unfortunately, we can't talk about any, you know, direct point in time. Uh, but we're very excited to be in the city of Coon Rapids. We closed on the site, uh, in, or late September, early October. Uh, and we, you know, tried to hit the ground running, uh, the best we can. So we feel like we have some, some pretty solid momentum. Uh, you know, a lot of this speaks to the quality of the city and the site. Uh, and yes, we control, uh, the vast majority of the site. Costco is not included. And then there's a small out parcel building that's not included. But the remainder of what's referred to as the inner ring and the outer ring, uh, are all under our ownership.
So you'll be filling in this year's building real soon.
We're very optimistic about that. Yes.
All good.
Oh, very good. That's good news. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to us all.
We hope to see you here many, you know, many, many times soon, I suppose for, you know, as much heavy lifting as we could do.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you and, uh, good luck with, uh, this, this particular location.
Thank you.
And Mr. Harlecker, do we have anything for other business?
Um, nothing new. We do have one item, uh, next month's agenda. Um, the, uh, the old gas BP gas station on North Dale and Hattie that is being redeveloped. Um, you'll be looking at a car wash and a, uh, small multi-tenant retail building on that site.
And please re- remember to, uh, include our policies, procedures, et cetera.
That's on, that'll be on the agenda.
As, as well as our vice chair position.
Yep.
And then anything under current development that you'd like to add to or comment on?
I have no other comments. No.
Mission, anyone have anything for other business?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Uh, I was just going to ask, uh, Mr. Harlecker, how are we coming along on those apartments behind Money Cow there? Are those, those got to be getting pretty close to completed?
The apartments at
Springbrook.
Springbrook Drive.
Um, yes, they are. And, uh, we did just get today, um, electrical applications. They're putting solar panels on the roof.
Yay.
I, I thought you'd be excited to hear that.
I am excited.
Coming along.
That's great.
It looks nice.
Yep.
Oh, you just have to get the sun to shine.
Yeah.
I made nine megawatts this year. It, it shines plenty.
All right, uh, no one has anything further?
I move to it, Jer.
I'll second.
Motion by Kate.
The two ladies.
Second by Smokey. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I, all's adjourned.